Well, good evening, everyone. Looks like we've got a huge crowd for tonight's entertainment. Welcome to those of you who are here. We are appreciative of you being here at our Rexburg City Council meeting for the July the 17th of 2024. I would like to start this meeting this evening with an opening prayer, and I will offer that, after which we'll ask Council President Walker to lead us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful for the opportunity to be here this night in our Rexburg City Council meeting. We're grateful for the opportunity we have to serve, and we ask you to bless us with discernment and wisdom in the things that we talk about and the decisions that we make, that we might be able to do the things that benefit our community the most, and be able to lead this community in a good and wholesome way. We're grateful for the good citizens that reside here and all of those who help us with all of our many projects and things that we are doing, and we ask a blessings to be upon them and all of us, that we can strive to do the right things at all times and strive to be more like Thee, and these things we pray in the name of Thy Son, Jesus Christ, amen.
If you'd stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you very much. Let's go ahead at this time with our roll call of council members.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember Colin Erickson.
Here.
Councilmember Eric Erickson.
Here.
Councilmember Reeser.
Here.
Council President Walker.
Here.
All right, that's great. We have everybody here tonight. That's awesome. Okay, item number three on our agenda is a time for public comment. If there's anyone who would like to make any public comments, this is the time on the agenda to do it, and if we would ask you to come to the podium and state your name and address. Is there anyone that would like to do so? Is there anyone online?
There is none.
Okay, all right, we will go ahead and move on to item number three then. Before we move into item number four, I would like to take a little bit of privilege and move item number eight forward. That is, we have some ratifications of people on our different committees, and so tonight we have Kelly Wadsworth has applied and been approved by or been appointed by me to serve on the ADA Committee. He works at Madison Memorial Hospital and has some good insight in those type of things. So unless there's any opposition, I would entertain a motion to ratify this appointment at this time.
Mr. Mayor, I saw the move that we ratify Kelly Wadsworth a member of the ADA Oversight Committee.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Chambers. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, that motion passes. We also have the ratification of the appointments of Cricket Mounts, Cheryl Empy, and Ally Rockwood to the Historical Preservation Committee, and I believe we have one of them in our presence here tonight. Cricket, would you be willing to just come up to the podium and just introduce yourself and tell us anything you'd like us to know?
Yeah, I'm Cricket, and I just live near here on Cheryl's place. I don't know what exactly you want to know about me. I just, I have a bachelor's or final arts degree, and I've used it to kind of lean into residential buildings, and so we had some friends that recommended that maybe I would be able to be of use for the committee, and I'm happy to help, but I'm sure I'll be learning things as I go along.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you. Yeah, my only question is, how are you going to raise that $5 million we need for the tabernacle?
Yeah.
That's why we appointed you.
I'll get right on that.
Just kidding. But no, thank you for coming. We appreciate your willingness to serve.
Yeah, I think it'll be great.
Okay, thank you very much.
Cricket's family, yes, not unfamiliar with fundraising. Her daughter was one of our tree donors.
Oh, is that right? Oh, that's awesome. Thank you.
When we were raising money for the parks.
We appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I wanted to ask Cricket, are you of the Mounts family connected with the Zollingers?
Yeah, yeah.
There's very...
She didn't want to have to admit that, but...
I pulled that against her.
I agreed to Stephen's nephew.
Right, yeah, okay, well, great.
Yeah.
Well, I know your family's all been, I'm assuming it's your mother-in-law?
Uh-huh, it's Mary Ann.
Yeah, it's been very active in community affairs, so you're continuing on that legacy. Not that under Sill, Cricket's own community, she's been in the community. Her dad was our director of security up on campus for a number of years.
Oh.
He was the sheriff down in Jefferson County.
Okay.
Years before that.
Okay.
Cricket comes from Manheim.
Yeah.
Which, don't hold bad against her either.
Garth is your dad, then?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, yeah, well, a rugby person, that's awesome, sort of. No, just kidding, just kidding, just kidding. We like to kind of keep that, that, what do you call it, alive and well, and, yeah, that rivalry in our community, so, but thank you, we appreciate you being here. So at this point in time, I would entertain a motion to ratify these three ladies to the Historical Preservation Committee.
I'll also move.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Erickson. Eric Erickson, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes, so consider yourself ratified. One other item, as far as Mayor's business, I think you should have received on your email an invitation to the Sons of the Utah Pioneers fireside this Sunday evening at 7:00. That will be held over at the Center State Building, and they would, those gentlemen that are putting, or those people that are putting on the fireside would love to have all elected officials and a lot of the city staff there, because that's who they're honoring that night, so, as public servants. They just, if you've ever been on before, they kind of take turns honoring different groups of people, you know, and one year it was police, I think they did, or emergency services and police officers, and this year they decided to go with elected officials and city staff and things like that, so, kind of a nice thing. And Louis Clements is going to be the speaker. He has a lot of historical fun things to talk about and interesting things about the history of Rexburg, and they've asked me to speak too, and I'll try not to bore you to death if you're there, so consider coming to that and bring your family if you'd like. They'll have good refreshments afterwards as well, so. Okay, let's move back to item number four on the agenda. We have a public hearing. This is a public hearing to approve Resolution 2024-06 to utilize and include in the fiscal year 2025 budget a portion of forgone tax. We'll go ahead and have Matt Nielsen tell us a little bit about this or whatever, answer any questions that we might have.
Good evening. So this is something that we didn't use to have to do this, but we also didn't use to have forgone in the city of Rexburg, but we did create some forgone a few years back when we took the, they call it the GPSI, which was basically, we took federal money during the COVID time, and instead of taking an increase in property taxes, which then set it aside in what they call forgone, and then over the last couple of years, we've been pulling back a little bit of that to put into the budget, and really, it's been for the same reason, it's to help pay for public safety. And so in this case, for next year, it would be $65,703 that we would add to the budget that would help pay for the position that we're requesting in patrol, so police patrol. And then, just, I can't remember if it shows on this one, it might not, but just for your information, you know, we have about 20, almost 27,000 that would be left in forgone that we could look at using in the next fiscal year, so that tells you how much is left. And so really, it's a public hearing that, just telling the public why we're using it, and so that's what it's about.
Okay, is there any questions or comments about that before we move forward? If none, the public hearing process is such that we will entertain any testimony from the public, and first we'll entertain testimony for the proposal, and then neutral, and then against. So that's how we'll proceed, so I will declare this public hearing open. Is there anyone that would like to testify in favor of this proposal? Hearing none, is there anyone who'd like to testify in the neutral position? If none, is there anyone who'd like to testify against this proposal? Okay, hearing none, I will declare this public hearing closed, and I would entertain a motion to move forward on Resolution 2024-06.
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 2024-06.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Seconded by Councilmember Reeser. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll move on to item number five, which is another public hearing to adopt ordinance 1316, which is our fiscal year 2025 budget appropriation. Is there any, I mean, we've talked about budget for a long time. Is there any questions for Matt on this before we move forward, or have you had questions answered well enough that we don't need to do questions? Anyone? Yes?
I do have one question. Is it possible, so we have the 1.5 million in there for the tabernacle, and we're not planning to spend it unless we have the money fundraised? Is there a way that we could stipulate that that money is only going to be spent if we have the money fundraised for it?
Yeah, I think it was 1.2, if I remember right, on the expense, and then, just so you guys know, we put $1 million in for federal grant and 200,000 for private contributions. And so, yeah, you could do that for sure. I mean, oh, reality, I mean, we wouldn't just go out and do a project that size anyways without coming to you to accept bids and putting it out to an RFP, but that is the understanding of staff is that unless we, unless we raise the money, we don't move forward with it.
The only reason I say that is because I know we've had to be careful in other places and cut in other places, and I feel like it would make it more clear that that money is coming from other sources besides tax dollars.
Yeah, I'm not sure how we would denote that. I mean, I guess we could just make a note on the budget items in the, in your spreadsheets.
Yeah.
And if you want to, if you want to adopt the budget with that, is there any issues with that? I mean, obviously, to Councilmember Johnson's point, that's what we want to do, but does that cause us any issues in anything else? If, I'm just kind of trying to think, avoid any unintentional consequences, you know?
Don't we do the same thing with any kind of capital expenditures? We budget for them, but we're not going to spend them until we have those funds available? It seems like there's other places we do the same thing.
Well, that's the point of this budget, is that we're approving the money to use for the next fiscal year, so when it's in there, it looks like it's approved.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we, I guess, the only reason I'm trying to think through any possible problems is if we, if we came up, if for some reason, and I don't know what it would be, but if for some reason we came up with some money that we could use for that, and we've stipulated that we can't use it unless it was a federal grant or fundraised, then, you know, we wouldn't be able to use it, even if maybe it made sense, so.
But I guess that's my concern, is I'm worried that we'll get into the fiscal year and we won't have fundraised enough, and we'll say, well, maybe we need to pull this million, and I'm not comfortable with that, so that would make me comfortable.
And I agree with you, and I agree with where you're going with that. The only thing is, that I'm thinking through is, I mean, we don't really have money that we could pull from anywhere else unless something happened that made some available, I guess, you know, just, you know what I'm saying?
No, I don't know what you're saying.
Well, if they're, say, for example, well, I don't know, maybe there's not really anything, I was just trying to think if some funding came available, but I guess it would have to be really a donation.
Yeah, there's not going to be any money from tax dollars made available if we don't approve it.
Yeah, yeah, there, I don't know.
And if there was, I mean, you guys would have to do a budget adjustment to make that happen.
Yeah, so, so I guess, I mean, you can stipulate whatever you want, if you want to, you know, if you want to stipulate that, I mean, I think, you know, that's well understood, but if you want to stipulate that, I don't really have any argument with that.
I guess my question would be is, then is, why is it in the budget if we don't have the money and we don't anticipate raising the money?
Well, we do anticipate raising it, that's why it's...
Well, Matt said it was for grants. Matt said it was because it looked better for grants, because I asked, because I was really confused about that also, so.
Yeah, so we're, we're obviously going through this whole fundraising campaign, right? And so as we apply for these grants and try to go out and raise these funds, we're trying to show, you know, what we're hoping to do and planning to do in that fiscal year.
Oh, that's, actually, that's the one thing, I think, that I was, there was something on my mind that I was trying to figure out. So, yeah, like this, like this concert, that's not really a donation, but we're, but it would be fundraised, so I guess if we say donations or fundraised, I guess that would cover that.
Yeah, it would be what I refer to as the private contributions, right? Whatever comes from that concert.
I'm not against what you're saying, I'm just kind of trying to make sure that we don't hamstring ourselves and go, oh, I wish we hadn't done that, you know what I'm saying?
Well, I don't see any way that hamstrings, as if we're really not planning to spend that money unless we get donations.
Yeah.
So that makes me feel more comfortable.
Yeah, that's fine. I don't have any argument with that, so. Okay, any other questions or comments? Yes.
Would that affect...
Can you come up to the mic, please, so that we've got it? Yeah, we know who you are, Alicia. Let's let him turn that mic on. There we go.
I'm just seeking clarification, just for me, so if that, does that include the money that's going to set aside for the HVAC? Does this part include that?
No.
Now, the HVAC's included, and then we have some of that from carryover, we've been saving over the years, and then there would be some money coming from the general fund to pay for that.
Okay, so this is different than that. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
Yeah, yeah, and that's kind of where I was going to, is just want to make sure that we weren't putting ourselves in a position where we, that we don't want to be in. Okay, all right, unless there's any other questions, we'll go ahead with the public hearing to adopt this ordinance, so same format. I'll open the public hearing, declare it open. Is there anyone who'd like to testify in favor of this particular ordinance, number If none, is there anyone who'd like to testify in the neutral position? Excuse me. Is there anyone who would like to testify against ordinance number 1316? Right, hearing none, I will declare this public hearing closed, and at this point in time, I would entertain a motion to move forward on ordinance number 1316.
Hey, Mayor, can I just, just one thing that I probably should just mention to you guys? So, just so you know, from what we discussed and advertised last time, it did change slightly, and I can't remember if we emailed this, but we basically had an expense in fire for turnout gear of 210,000 that we were able to reduce to 47,000, and then, of course, that changes Fund 19 and Fund 01, and so it changed a few of them, but in the end, what it did is, it actually saved Fund 01 about $127,000. It also allowed us to reduce what we have to carry forward down to $1 million in the general fund, and it also allowed us to increase the contingency up to about 237,000. So all good things, but I just want you to be aware of that.
Okay, that's good to know, good to know. Okay, entertain a motion at this point.
I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 1316 concerning our fiscal year 2025 budget with the stipulation that the 1.2 million for the tabernacle will only be spent if we're able to fundraise that from private donations.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that? Oh, yes, yes.
Question. This, this says it's the Tabernacle Operations Fund, so are operations of the tabernacle, is this, are there operations that are included in this that are not part of the capital improvements? You know what I mean?
Well, yeah, the operations wouldn't be part of that fundraising stipulation, but is that, is that 1.2 million listed in the operations fund?
It's in the Tabernacle Operations.
I didn't look at it.
Yeah, it's in Fund 04. It is in the same fund, yes.
So, I mean, I just don't want to put a stipulation in there that we can't, we can't operate the tabernacle.
Yeah, and that's exactly where I was going with that.
Coming in, you know what I mean?
But I stipulated the 1.2 million that was supposed to come from private donations, and that was all I stipulated, so it doesn't include the operation costs.
Okay, 1.2 million for, for the improvement.
Yeah.
The total budget for '24 is 1.0, we're talking about '25 budget, though, aren't we?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so if you want to, if you want to clarify it, the 1.2 million is specifically for building remodel, and so that would be a good clarification.
You can add that right in there.
Okay, so we'll add that in, that the 1.2 million for, that's specifically pledged, or, what's the word? What?
Budgeted.
Budgeted, yeah, for, for tabernacle remodel and improvements, so, okay, okay, I think that's clear then. All right, let's see, we had a motion, I need a second on that motion.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Council President Walker. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes. Item number six is our committee reports. Let's just go ahead and start down here with Councilmember Reeser. Have you got anything to report that we need to know about from your committees?
No, nothing new at this time.
Okay, Councilmember Eric Erickson.
No, really, nothing. I missed the meeting two weeks ago, we were out of town, that normally attend, and so I really don't have anything to report.
Okay, Councilmember Chambers?
No, not really. We did have our urban renewal meeting today, had the public hearing for the budget, and we have approved the budget for 2025, so.
Yeah, and one thing I might add to that is, we, our urban renewal is planning to send one of our members, our new members, J.C. Weber, to Boise, they've got some urban renewal training, they call it Urban Renewal 101 Training, and we're actually trying to encourage some of our legislators, especially one who tends to be a little bit hesitant about urban renewal, and trying to get them to attend that as well, so that they can learn more about urban renewal and that kind of thing, so. If any of you would like to go to that, it's, I think, was it the 27th and 28th or something like that next week? I believe if any of you would like to attend that, it's still open for attendees, if any of you would like to understand property taxes and urban renewal districts and things like that.
Sort of a 101 course.
Yeah, so, anyway, that's just, I'm just throwing that out there. Let us know if you'd like to attend. Okay, let's move to Council President Walker.
I have nothing to report.
Okay, Councilmember Johnson?
Just a couple of questions for trails. I know I, I mentioned Mark Nigren, too, before, and he wants to be on the, on this committee, so I thought there's...
Yeah, I'll write that down, and, oh, yeah, the other thing, in fact, on that, on that committee, I'm assuming Eric Isaacson, I haven't talked to him, but I think he wanted to be on it, don't you think?
Yeah, and he's on there, he just would need to stay on. I think he would have been ratified and everything.
Yeah, so I would ask all of you other council members, if you know of anyone that you think would like to be on the Parks and Trails and Recreation Committee, to let me know, and I'll try to get ahold of them this coming week and kind of get that organized.
I have one more that contacted me, it's Eric Erickson, the other Eric Erickson.
Oh, uh-huh.
He's come to a couple of things.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, he said he wanted to be on there, too.
Okay.
Do you have his application for this call?
Oh, okay.
I'm just going here, do you have that form? It's just a really quick online form, but it gives correct spelling and good who you all addresses, so we're not trying to...
Mark Nigren said he did fill it out. I don't know, did he, did you get one from him?
Uh, I...
But he seemed a little like, maybe he didn't quite know how to do it online or something, so I don't know.
I'm trying to remember if I saw one from him. I don't recall that I did, but I just remember you mentioned to me that he was interested.
Okay, I don't know, he told me he filled it out, but maybe he thought he did, and it didn't quite work out or something, I'm not sure.
Okay, yeah, I don't, I do remember seeing the one from Eric Erickson, but I don't recall that I saw one from Mark, but I can check. Okay.
And then, the dog park, we're going to plan to lay those wood chips whenever they come in, so if there's anybody listening that wants to help with that, they could contact me.
Okay, yeah, yeah, that's unfortunate that they, well, I don't know how unfortunate, I mean, it's kind of unfortunate, but as hot as the weather's been, that would really, it might be better if they come when it's a little cooler, so, at least definitely more pleasant for those who might be, might be helping with that, but, anyway, okay, thank you very much. Councilmember Erickson.
The only thing I have is from the Gulf Ward, we spend most of the time on fees and budgets, and, but the golf courses are doing really well still, a lot of people are out using our facilities out there. The airport board canceled their meetings, and I don't have nothing from the school board.
It's like everybody's going on vacation or something, huh?
Summertime.
Yeah, summertime, that's the way it is. All right, thank you very much, appreciate that. Let's move on to our staff reports. Item A is our information technology with Mr. Todd Smith, our information technology director.
So, this is the M2 contract. We talked about the building access control and surveillance system, I think three weeks ago we brought it in, and you asked us to move forward with M2, so we've got some hard numbers back from them. I don't know, I should have printed up a summary or something for you, but I don't know. It just, yeah, open up all of them, we'll switch around a little bit, so, so we can look at this in first, so this is for the access control, 106,000 and some change, so this is like the base price, what it would cost to do all the doors, locks, access control, like the mobile app, different things like that, to do all the locks and stuff like that. We've also talked about doing the premium support PSA, which is the 10,006 annually. That would, I mean, we would look toward doing that for a 10-year contract, at the end of 10 years, M2 would come in and replace any equipment that they haven't already replaced at no additional cost. We would just continue to pay that 10,006 every year, and they would basically do everything that's required there. And then, the other one is the surveillance, yep, that one. So this is the bigger one, so 299, almost 300,000 to go through and replace and add a bunch of new cameras to the system, and then almost 30,000 on the premium support for that, so same story, after 10 years, they would come in and replace all of that sort of stuff. And then one of the questions that we had last time was, what about all the stuff that they're not touching? And so they gave us this quote, so for 5100, they would, he calls it age appreciation, but they basically kind of bring everything into compliance, not physically, but they would just basically assume responsibility for everything else that they're not touching for 5100, and then it would add 5700 every year to the support for those other additional pieces. And this is a kind of a conglomeration of some cameras and some access control door stuff, so it's, this is just like everything else, okay? So the total cost for the first year is 457,952, so almost 458,000, just shy of 458,000 for the first year, that's everything, including the first year of support, and then after that, it would be about 46,358 every year after that, the second year through the 10th year.
That's the premium.
The premium support, yeah. The premium support, yeah.
Okay, and basically with those three added together, it's, it's pretty much everything, like you say, door, all the doors, all the cameras, everything?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, any, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask, how often are they gonna be checking the cameras in our, the service area? Are they gonna be monthly or every quarter? Or how often are they gonna go through and make sure everything's up to par?
So, they've been a little flexible on that, so at least once a year, but they do get some alerts from outages and things like that, too. So, there, if a camera goes down, then they know that that's there as well. It's not just us that gets those, but they get those alerts as well. And so, you know, when they're here, they would also check other systems that are, you know, at least nearby or related, or if we're having issues or questions, I mean, they can check those things when they come on site for other stuff, and so it's really kind of flexible, but at least once a year.
And this will take me off the call list, right?
Yes.
I received two last night at twelve-thirty and twelve.
Yes, you did.
No, we don't want to do that.
That's because I slept through those. I apologize for that.
So, on that premium, the premium support, after something goes down, how long before they're here? I mean, is it a week, days?
No, the, I can't remember exactly what the response time was. It seems like it was, like, that same day, eight hour, eight hour response time when they would acknowledge it.
Business hours, okay.
I thought it was within twenty-four hours.
Two hours.
Yeah, so a two, two hour response time when they would acknowledge it, and then within twenty-four hours, they would have a result.
To business day, non-critical. Eight hour critical, okay.
Thank you. Look at you on the.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Any other questions from anyone? Right, if there are no other questions, I would entertain a motion to approve this expenditure.
Mayor, I'll make that motion to approve.
The contract, I guess I would say.
The contract with?
M two.
M two.
M two, okay. The contract with M two that we have talked about, and with all three of the components, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Johnson. Any further discussion or questions about it? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will go ahead and execute that contract and get them going on putting in new cameras and all the security things, so. Okay, item, we have one other item that we'd like to have on Todd's group here, and that would be, I'll let you go ahead.
So, there were some questions in the past about Silver Star and going forward, like one of the things I think that you, Mr. Chambers, had brought up is that, you know, what happens to a neighborhood, somebody in the neighborhood that wants to come in, you know, a year after they've been through or whatever, you know, how much do those cost and those types of things. So, I invited Brock Walters from Silver Star to come in. He'll give you a little update on their progress with construction, and then respond to any of those questions you might have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Walters?
All right, thank you, counsel. All right, this is just a quick update, continuations from when I came in May of just the progress with the construction. You may not be able to see it super well. There's different colors there of where things are at. The red is what's under construction right now, and so you can see that blue and the purple and the yellow, and those areas have been completed and are turned up with service. So, you could say not quite half the city, but everything west of the railroad tracks is up and in service. Oh, thank you. Just right over here, so this area, we've built out almost all of this stone bridge, we're calling it area, as well as we call this ricks over by Hidden Hollow and stuff. That's almost all complete as well, and then they're gonna start this downtown area right now. With this, we have three hundred and fifty homes that are actively using the service now, with two hundred that have drops that are in progress to get connected, as well as you can see lots more that are wanting to get connected as we get to either their part of the city or just haven't started their drop yet in that portion of the city. A significant part of this project is that fifty-one percent of the customers are interested in gig internet, and that, and you can see, or sixty-six percent of them are in gig or higher packages, and those just aren't available unless you're on fiber today here in Rexburg. And so, with this, it allows an added amount of, whether it's work from home, whether it's telehealth, whether it's all these different benefits, and with the added competition, because there's multiple providers on the same platform, you don't have to have different installs for different providers, you can switch if you want to, and it causes them to not have contracts and overages and anyways.
Just a, just a question. We're connected now, but not getting nearly the speed that, we're not getting anywhere close to one gig speed.
Okay.
So, I'm just wondering if that has to do with the fact that it's not built out completely yet, or is that an issue that the providers got to deal with?
Honestly, it's, it's usually the provider that has either an issue with their service not getting delivered to you, or with the equipment on inside your home. There's a deal there.
Sometimes it's just like, like when we got connected, my, my desktop computer was a lot faster. It was getting, I think I only signed up for three hundred, because before I only had twenty. I figured three hundred was, and then I was getting three twenty up or down, I guess. But my cellphone was constantly doing the circle thing. So, we called the provider, and they said, oh, well, you've got to change your cellphone settings to, to the five G, and as soon as I did that, it works fine. So, sometimes it's just a matter of getting some things straightened out with your provider. So, that's what I would do, is call them and talk with them about it and see what they can do. Todd, did you have a comment?
Yeah, so the other thing, too, is if you're checking that, if you're doing that speed test where the device is connected over Wi-Fi, then you're gonna get significantly lower speeds than if you're directly connected wired into that router, so that'll make a difference to the.
There's funny, there's a lot of fives that are in this industry. So, there's the five G over wireless that cellular providers tout. There's five gigahertz, which is a frequency of your Wi-Fi, and then there's five gig. You can see up here, one of them's offering five gig for their home for a speed, very, very different with a five gigahertz versus of what you can actually are getting at your device. So, I can explain if you want to, kind of nerdy, but, and so it's just hard for consumers sometimes to differentiate those. It's kind of technical, but.
Okay.
I'm happy to have somebody give you a call, Councilmember Erickson, so. Okay. So, with this, there's also, following up with you, Mayor, the event on August twelfth, we're gonna be celebrating open access and what it's doing for the community, and so we've invited some local, Mayor will be speaking, as well as some state and federal, different people to come. And so, this will be August twelfth, and I have an invitation for all of you if you'd like to attend, so.
April twelfth, right?
August twelfth.
I mean, sorry, yeah, April would be, August twelfth.
Be all worth it by then.
I have that on my calendar, I believe. Let's see, where is that? That's, what time is that set up to be?
That is at two o'clock.
I actually don't have that. August twelfth, that's Monday, August twelfth, right?
It is.
Okay, I'm gonna put that on there then. Okay, anything else?
That's all I had prepared, and to answer questions, if you.
Any further questions from anyone? Yes.
I'll let you ask if you have.
Well, the question was, for example, they extended the fiber through our neighborhood, and there were some that connected, some that did not. If they decide after the fact that they want connection, are they still eligible for the free connect from the line to the home? And at what point does that terminate or that deadline loom?
Through this year, my contracts, it's the same price, and so I can offer it free to the end user still.
To December three, one.
Through next year, as I make my contracts in preparation for that, I hope to do the same, and then at the end of twenty twenty-five is when we would move in, is my goal, to move into there. If you still haven't signed up, and you change your mind, and then you want fiber, we're gonna charge you three hundred and fifty dollars, and that would be all the construction in order to get to your home. But there, it would already be, you know, the main line would be accessible to your home, but it's just that connection from basically the edge of the road, getting it and the electronics to go into the home.
So, if we had a, a new subdivision come in twenty twenty-six, and they're plating fifty lots, how would you charge? Would you charge three hundred and fifty per lot?
So, with new construction, if we can get into the open trench, we've determined that it's going to be free cost. That's the main line as well as to the home. That's working with builders and working with developers. That's a good, for us as well as it's good for them, free cost to them as well as to the, and, you know, consumers. It helps us save a lot of money if we can get in that open trench.
How does that word get out to the developers?
We've been working directly with some. I know some have, as they've contacted the city and stuff, they've reached out to us because of connections with the city.
And I, we talked about this in our last meeting. I have a sense that there are some residents who have not requested the connection to their home, because they feel like that obligates them to a monthly fee, and I'm just wondering if there could be a better promotional job that says this adds value to your home. You're not committed unless you sign up with a provider for service.
So, we, we do ask people if they sign up, that they'll take service. I mean, it's a big investment for us to build to your home. We do not have contracts, though, so we've had several people after we build, and we bring a drop to their home after a month, decided, you know what, I still am gonna stay with my other provider because I have a contract or whatever, but I wanted that drop. And so, that's where we have, we haven't really pushed that narrative of like, yeah, we want to take a free drop to everybody because we would like to support it with a revenue that helps us to fund, and, and so, but yeah, we have had a handful of those that have realized we don't have contracts, and so they get the free drop, and yeah. We hope, we, we believe they'll connect in the future as well, as the need for more bandwidth and stuff grows, so.
Thank you. Those are all my questions.
Okay, any other questions?
Okay, thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate you coming and giving us that update. Okay, let's move on to item number B, which is a finance report, and Mr. Matt Nielsen. Oh, hey, Brock, just before you leave, can I ask you one more question I had when you had that graph up there? You said, you mentioned a sixty-one, up to a sixty-one percent take rate. Is that just in certain areas, or is that kind of the average overall? Yeah, that's fine.
So, it's funny, because, so your neighborhood, for example, is a very high take rate. It's actually over a hundred percent when we look at it.
Oh, yeah?
But it's because we're using the broadband serviceable locations that are tracked by the FCC, and there's a lot of new homes that haven't been tracked in your neighborhood.
Oh, okay.
That aren't on their, you could say, their official broadband locations yet. And so with that, what I do is we have each of the different neighborhoods just in groups, and so we track those percentages and try and promote it. If there's maybe an area that hasn't, if we feel like understood it well enough, we'll go and either knock on the doors or do a door hanger or a mailer or something.
So, is the sixty-one percent just kind of an average over everything?
So, our average actually over everything right now, because we're just in the building phase still, is at thirty percent.
That's about thirty.
So, everywhere we've passed, thirty percent of that. That neighborhood is actually the Henderson neighborhood, and they're about sixty-one, sixty-two percent.
Okay, get you. Okay, okay, just wondering. Thank you.
Okay, so, the finance reports, honestly, I'm not, I'm not gonna go through in too much detail unless you guys have questions. Basically seventy-five percent through the fiscal year, so. That's all I have on that, because I got plenty of other things to go through here in a second. Want me to hit the next one, Mayor?
Yeah, that'd be fine, unless, unless there's any, does anybody have any questions about anything in particular on this? Okay, go ahead, yeah.
Okay, so the next one, we're probably, we're gonna have to go through probably just one by one here. So, these are, so, so I went through some of these budget adjustments we've just kind of been holding off just to see what happens by the end of the fiscal year, but we, we basically have to quit doing budget adjustments so that we can set this public hearing. And so, these are kind of the final ones, but as I go through each of these, if you guys wanna maybe pull one, like, if there's one that you're like, I'm not sure we want to do that, maybe we pull it aside, so that you don't have to vote on each one individually, and then maybe you can vote on them all, and then we can address the individual ones if there are any. So, this first one is mostly to do with the fact that our audit skyrocketed in price, actually last year and this year, but because of the timing of budgeting, it was substantially short. And then the other changes there are for some customer service. They had to bring on a part-time person for a project, which is now done, and, and they do not have that part-time person anymore, but that's about what the cost was, is eighty-two hundred. There's a little bit of training in there as well, and so, any questions on that one? And it's basically to come from contingency is what we're recommending on that one.
Do you want to motion on these one at a time, or?
I would say, let's go through, and then if you guys are good with that approach, and then if there's one that you want to pull out and address separately, let's do that.
Yeah, I think that's probably all right.
Okay, so this next one is, I went through, and we have, we had quite a few vehicles coming off of lease, and so this is like a three-part deal here, but we had bought one that was, was a, I can't remember, it was a, it was a three-quarter ton for engineering, and they really don't need a three-quarter ton, but Parks needs a three-quarter ton. And so, what we did is, we found this half-ton that's coming off of lease. It's, it's, so basically what we're saying is, we're gonna have Parks buy the one from engineering, and then Parks wanted to buy that in October, so we actually are bringing it forward and buying it now because we can get that vehicle now coming off of lease. And then the F one fifty that we're gonna purchase will go to engineering, and then the last one is, the mayor and I chatted about this, there's a lot of times where we often actually need another vehicle here at City Hall for all the departments here internally. We have a Toyota Highlander, but they were gonna send back a Durango with thirty thousand miles, it's a twenty nineteen, and I was like, well, let's, wait a minute, let's maybe keep that. And so, it's up to you guys. We felt like it, it would be a good buy to have that second vehicle here that departments can use. Either way, I would buy it, and if you don't want to keep it, I'd resell it because the book on it's closer to nineteen thousand, and it was an admin vehicle. So, that's what that one is. Any questions on that one regarding the lease, leases vehicles?
Is that Dodge Durango for parking?
Can't remember if it was or not.
That low mileage?
It was pretty low. I don't know if it was them or if it was one of the other divisions that's not patrol, right?
It probably is, because I think it was pretty low mileage on it, yeah.
Low mileage like that?
Yeah. Okay, so this, this next one, so this is something that the mayor and I were looking at this, so, so as we went through the budgeting for twenty-five, you guys will probably recall, part of our, what we want to start doing is setting aside for the irrigation system at Teton Lakes. And the way we would do that is, we would have a little bit coming from the Gulf Operating Fund each year. We would have the city and the county match in amount, and so in order to do this clean, I really wanted to clean out and kind of start at zero balance, if you will, in the debt service fund, which is Fund fifty-one. And so, the county had came in and actually paid off their share of the debt for that new nine holes that we were, had been paying on for probably a decade plus now. for that new nine holes that we were, had been paying on for probably a decade plus now. And so what this would do is we originally were just going to pay 25,000. We are recommending that we, we get it paid off on the city side as well. And then as we go into fiscal year '25, whatever is in there, we know that that is what's going to be saved towards that irrigation project. So we're not trying to mingle the two, if you will. And so the, the recommendation is just to pull this out of fund balance. It, it does reduce your reserve, you know, by that additional almost 100,000. But we felt like that would be prudent and then it would more closely match with the county's done as well. So, any questions on that one?
Anyone?
Okay. The next one is, this one, we just had, we had a really high amount of revenues that came in for street clawbacks. And so, and just so you guys know, I don't just go through and like, hey, let's do one here and let's do one there. So a lot of these, as we go through the audit process, you know, there's, we have to go through a little bit of work if there's large variances. And so we're just trying to make sure that we're, we're pretty close. And really, this is a great one. I mean, it's additional revenue and all I'm saying is it's going to go to Fund 43. And, yeah. And actually, I probably need to add, I didn't add it here, but I need to add the transfer into Fund 43 probably as well. But anyways, that, that's just additional.
Isn't that what it says right there on the bottom? Transferred to Fund 43?
Yeah, I just didn't list the accounts on the top. Sorry, I just listed the O2 accounts. But I'll look at that one. Okay, and then the next one. This one may be one that we have a little bit of discussion on for sure. But so basically, we, we have been, I think everybody knows this, but maybe not. So we've been working with BYU Idaho to be able to use the I Center and do a fundraising concert for the tabernacle. And so they, they have agreed to allow us to do that. The timeframe would be March of next year. And so we went through a process over the last few months to basically vet artists that we could potentially bring in. They had to approve those, so they came back to us with the list. And we have been kind of going through our top choice to our bottom choice to see what makes sense and what we can, we think we can afford to do or which one takes less risk and all those things. And you'd be amazed, you know, some of these artists have came back at like 550. Some of them have came back.
550,000.
Thousand, yeah. Some of them came back in the 300s. To be honest, I think the one that we're going to end up landing on is probably going to be in that probably 80 to 90,000 when it's all said and done. We're asking for the 150 just in case it is a little higher. But, you know, that's going to be a strategy thing. And we've, we've been looking at the numbers and we've been talking about what, how they've been able to do with the people they've brought in. And, and we're, we're feeling pretty good that, that there's a good opportunity to bring at least this one particular artist in around 90,000 and potentially bring in $200,000 to $300,000 in, in proceeds. So.
So are, are we using any event management people?
Yes.
To make sure we do this right?
Yeah, to market it.
Well, not only market it, but the negotiations, every, I mean, it almost sounds like we're trying to, I don't know, I just, there are people out there who can.
Yeah, yeah.
Make sure that it's successful is what I'm saying.
Yeah, and so we brought in, we brought in a professional that does that. It's the individual that's been doing it for years for the Blackfoot Fair, the East Idaho Fair. And we actually met with BYU Idaho as well. He came in and he actually recommended that, that they work with the individual that does contracting at BYU Idaho. So that's who we've been working with. And that individual has been, you know, the, the kind of the go-between, if you will. BYU Idaho has also said we're willing to negotiate and write that whole contract. And so, so it's really for us, we just have to decide on the amount. And if we're, you know, we're going to be on the hook for whatever that amount is, right? And the, the timing of it is that it's a very good chance that you're going to have to pay this artist in advance in this fiscal year, but you're not going to see those revenues really start to pour in until the next fiscal year. Because it's going to probably take us a few months to get it off the ground. And, and then we do have another, that individual that works with the East Idaho State Fair. You know, we are going to look at them and see if there's some additional money. We would potentially pay them to, to do a better job of marketing it, if you will, to the, not just Rexburg, but to Southeast Idaho and Utah and those kind of things. Because really, if you think about it, this is, this is the, one of the biggest venues in Idaho. I mean, you can go clear to 15,000 people potentially.
My concern is that this is a, this is an unusual thing. I don't think this has ever done something at, at this level anyway of entertainment, so.
It, it is.
I want to make sure we got the right people in place to help us work through this for the first time.
Yeah, and one of the things that we'll be doing as well is we'll be going out to corporate, to find a corporate sponsor to hopefully cover a substantial cost or a portion of this cost, if not all of it, for the artist. And so.
We will allow that.
Yeah, yeah, we've been working through all of this and so. Because really, what will happen is we're, we're going to have to pay it, right? As a higher work expense. The city's paying that. But then as those, as that donation comes back in to cover it, that comes to the city. It's not going to go through, through BYU Idaho, it's going to go through us. So.
Can we just be renting the facilities to the university?
They're providing it for free.
Yeah, they, they've agreed to donate all of the facility and to run the concert to, you know, kind of to Eric's question.
And ticketing.
They will, they'll do all the ticketing. They'll have the people there that will usher, you know, they'll, they'll run the, the whole concert for us. And then this gentleman that Matt's talking about from the State of State Fair will, will help us to market it. They'll market it too. We will market it as best we can. But, but this, to your point, we get this guy that does it professionally that will market it out to the greater, you know, area and try to bring people in from the whole region, not just from this area.
Yeah.
More people we can bring in, of course, the more money we'll raise for our cause, so. Yeah, question?
So this is the only fee that we, like, so BYU Idaho is not charging for all that? That's pretty amazing.
No, not, other than, you know, we do have to pay the, the sales tax. And so, I mean, there's going to be that component.
Okay. Yeah, and I mean even, I mean, I'm sure we've all been to things on campus, like even Ryan Hamilton, it wasn't that full, as full as you would think. So I think you really would have to advertise to the entire region to.
Yeah, the one that they, you know, they, they had.
What's his? Brett Young.
Brett Young, and they, they sold about 6,000 tickets, I think you said. They feel like, you know, the ones that we're looking at feel like we can bring in more people than that. But even if we only brought in, I think we figured if we brought in only that many, that we would, what'd you figure, about 250, 300?
If we brought in like 40% of the capacity. But that's at face value for what we listed for. So that's, that's all part of this equation is will people pay what we're asking, right? And so, so it would bring in almost, I think it was like 230 to 240 of net profit.
You don't want to say what you're going to ask yet, what you're thinking.
The pricing? Uh, we're still working on all of that. So probably best to kind of not do that until we're ready to publicize it and everything.
But, but you'll have a pretty big range. Like, I'll just give you a brief example. Like you might be 120 if you're up front or maybe 35 to 40 if you're up in the top balcony. And so there's going to be a pretty wide range. And we have all of their, their sections, their seating. And, and we're strategically going through that with the university on, you know, where we think we can get more and which section, et cetera, et cetera.
And we're comparing it to what they charge at a lot of these other concerts around, you know, so that we're, don't, don't feel like we're overcharging or undercharging. We're trying to kind of land in the spot that people are willing to pay, you know?
Yeah. Hey, any more questions on that one? And like I say, I, I'm, if we go with the artist that we're kind of working on right now, we're not going to even come close to the 150, so. Okay, so the next one is, it's really, this is really just an entry for the Fire District. We just do the accounting for them, but, but they had, they did not include some of these costs in their budget. But it's really for a new well and, and land purchase. And then they also did buy, they're going to buy, if they haven't already, Purchase Engine Number 12. So the way that works is the city and the Fire District own that Engine 12. But the Fire District is going to buy it outright. So they have to buy it back for $40,000. And then it becomes their asset and they move it out to Thornton or Sugar City or wherever they would take it. And then that becomes revenue that, that we split to, to replace other engines essentially. So, so that's what that is. Flight Museum, they've been pretty active on buying and selling airplanes. And so they, they have purchased a few airplanes. But the good news is, is they've also sold some airplanes and brought in a lot of private contributions. Deb knows more about this, but, but basically, I mean, they're, they're bringing in the, the money to cover this. And, and they, or, or using if they have to, sometimes the reserve that they've already built up in prior years. So that's what that is. And the next one is, is a very large one. So this one, I'm just taking it out because it's not happening hopefully next year. And so that is this project that we've had in for a few years with Sugar, Teton and Rexburg to replace the line that's ending, at end of life, if you will. I think we're all familiar with that one. It's, it's back in the '25 budget as well. And so, and that one, I think it will, I think Keith, I would say, we're pretty confident that will happen next year. That's the goal. We've talked to the landowners. We feel like we've got everything in order there. And so crossing our fingers, hoping next March we start it. So. The next one is, this was for the grant that reconstructed, did the craps, I think we call it the craps project, if I remember right, for Yellowstone and Pioneer Road. It was a state grant. So we're just showing the revenue and showing the expense. And then the next one is street new construction. So this one, kind of the same thing. We got a grant from the state and then urban renewal is covering it. But it's basically to finalize the 7th South Railroad Crossing and the Roundabout, which was like a three-year project. And then the last one is that sidewalk that went on 7th South on the other side of the, the west side of the highway to 12th West. So.
Just a quick question. Don't you think, from my memory, I think we've, I think we've paved and repaved more streets in the city than ever before, haven't we, by this time of the year? Is there another year, other than the year after the Teton Dam flood? I guess you'd say in the last 46 years. What?
I don't know whether it's the most paving you've ever done, but I believe you have the most orange cones in history spread around the city right now.
Cone, we're.
So we can pave.
Cone-filled city. It just, it, you know, as I, as I add up all of the things that we've done, starting with Pioneer Road early on, it just seems like we've done a lot of paving this year. And that, it, it's looking really nice. I mean, that, the road going past Smith Park over there up to the hospital, I just drove on that today. And I remember driving on that a few weeks ago and thinking, wow, this road is horrible. And it's so much nicer. So anyway, I think we've gotten a lot done this year. A lot of construction woes, but nice roads.
Okay, so the next one is, I took a pretty deep look at Gulf Operations Fund 50. And we did have some overages, mostly in part-time wages that you see there and then some repairs. But this is all coming from, it's being covered by additional revenues and/or carryover from the prior year. And I, I mean, Colin already mentioned this, but I, I've been forecasting the carryover in Gulf every month with the board. And every month I increased how much we're going to increase the carryover. I mean, it is, they've had a phenomenal year in terms of how much revenue they're bringing in, so.
Good.
And then the, the next one's the Entrepreneurial Fund. We've, we've been paying on this one all year, but basically this is a pass-through grant, received a federal grant. And what happens is they send us the expenses. We pay it, then we request the money. It comes back to us. It's a net zero, so. And that's pretty close to being done. And it's for that entrepreneurial center right by Altura out there. If you're not familiar on, like, I think of what road that is. First American Road? No, that's not it. But out there where First American is. North, north, I guess would be a better way to say it. Okay, so this next one is, this is another big sewer project that has been pushed. This one, I, I know we're still working on, definitely working on getting some light away needed. But this is a project that's going to be funded 65% by the city, 35% by urban renewal. But I, I took it out of the budget because it's not going to happen and we've got it back in the budget for next year. So hopefully we get it done. And then the last one is just, we just had quite a few. Things change in the Street Lighting Fund. We, we had, for one thing, we budgeted it in the small lighting projects, but it ended up being a very large project, so I flipped it into that one. And then we did finish up another round of LED upgrades. This is basically all coming from money that's been carried over for these specific projects. It's just a timing issue of when you budget it versus when you actually get the work done. And they, and they did come in a little bit higher than we had anticipated as well, but we accepted those bids, got the work done. So that is, that's it. So that's a lot. So unless you guys want to pull one out specifically, I think I would recommend you entertain a motion for all of them.
That'd be for, let's see, just for the two and three, all of the budget? Or no, that, that's just all of these items?
This is just you.
Just number two, right? Okay. But, but all of the different budget adjustments included in them, in that item?
Yeah.
All right, is there any specific one anyone wants to pull out? Or do you want to just go ahead with all of them together? Any? If, if, if there isn't any that you want to separate, then I would entertain a motion to approve all of these budget adjustments altogether.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion that we approve the budget adjustments as presented.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I second.
Second by Councilmember Reese. Any further discussion or questions? Hear none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. We'll move on to item number three.
Okay. So the next one is, including those budget adjustments you just, you just accepted. I had to go in and calculate, you know, what our original and what our amended final budget is. And so, so we are showing you this real quick. And then what we're looking for is a motion to basically set a public hearing for the 7th of August. And then I would advertise it real quick, actually next Tuesday. And then we would have a public hearing. But I'm not going to go through by any means all of these. If you want to look at the specifics of what was adjusted, you would want to just look under that notes column. But basically, we went from 81.8 million down to 81.06 million. And then if you look to the far right, I think it is interesting. If you go to the bottom, you can basically see, you know, what percent goes to what in the budget. But like Public Works is about 52% of the budget. Admin overhead's about 13%. Building safety accounts for a whopping 1%. And then Parks, Rec and Cultural Arts accounts for about 11%. And then your emergency services and police accounts for about 23%. So it's just a good way for you to kind of see where we're allocating these funds.
Are there, are there national standards as far as how those, how the revenues in a city are expanded in different, in different ways?
I, I haven't specifically seen a standard like, hey, it should be this percent or that percent. It's generally more so, like for recreation, for example, they'll say it's typical for the, a program to.
It'd be interesting to see how we, how we stack up.
It's kind of difficult because every city is so different. I mean, like Idaho Falls has an airport, we don't. They have a power company, we don't. I mean, you know, but I, I mean, maybe it, just those particular categories, I suppose, maybe. But I've never really seen anything that.
Yeah, I mean, this, the biggest standard for like emergency services that I've seen over the years is more like how many people should have per thousand.
Per thousand, yeah. There are those standards.
That's the typical thing. And we are, like, it doesn't matter which department you look at in Rexburg, we're typically way under that standard because we just can't afford to be at that standard.
Yeah. Those are, they're way high. Okay. All right, then I would entertain a motion to set the public hearing for this particular, for the budget amendments of. for the budget amendments of 2024. Is there such a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we set the public hearing for the 2024 budget adjustments for August 7th, 2024.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilmember Colin Erickson. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes. We'll move on to item number four.
Okay. This one is the utilities. And you, if you really want to go through the calculations, they're all in there. And some of them are very large. But I'm going to summarize it. And so go ahead and go where you were, Deborah, that's probably a great spot to be. So with sewer, going into fiscal year 25, what we're recommending is October 1st, so the beginning of the new fiscal year 25, that we increase sewer about 1.95% for the, what we call the treatment fee for Sugar and Teton. And then we would increase the treatment fee for Rexburg. Let's see, so 0.99%, sorry, I was reading that wrong there. And then no increase in the base fee. So, and then, and you guys can ask questions on anything. So water would be an increase in the base fee of about 2.7%. And in the volume fee of about 4.1%. And then as you look at garbage, over the years, I'll try to explain this quick. So when we initiated recycling a decade plus ago, originally, we were billing all of that to volume because as you think about how that program started, it was take your stuff to Walmart or, and drop it in the bin, right? And, but then we moved into residential can pickup. And so over the years, what's happened is, is we evaluated the way that was being billed, it was being billed pretty heavily to volume, which means that, you know, your high commercial users and volume users were actually covering a lot of that cost. And so a few years ago, we said, well, we're going to shift that slowly over several years directly to what we call, you know, residential customer, right? And so they're paying about 75% in this budget of that direct recycling hired work cost, if you will. And so, so what that does, over the last few years, what we've seen is a higher increase for the residential and actually a slight decrease in the volume users. And so like big apartments or big, you know, box stores, those kind of things would be those volume users. And so as you look at it, you know, you'd be going up about 6.68% for a 90-gallon weekly pickup for a customer. And not all of those are residential. I mean, we do have some, some of the blue cans at commercial locations. It's just very limited. And then you'll see all the way down to a decrease of 0.17% for the three-yard customer, which is the big ones, right? And part of the thing that's driving these fees as well, just so you're aware, is the tipping fees have continued to climb over the last few years. And we're currently at $80, they want to go up to $100. So when you think about that, it's 25% increase, which for us is, you know, $300,000. So it's a big number. And so anyways, that's, those are some of the things that are driving. Yes?
Are we going to be seeing any, with the new landfill that's coming online? My understanding was is that that was going to save everybody. Is that going to, is that true?
Well, I haven't, I mean, I haven't personally been involved in that. But I mean, over time, I think it will save on the fees because they're having to truck it clear out to Jefferson, right? So you have a high transportation cost. But I mean, that landfill's pretty far away too, when you really think about it. So there's going to be some costs.
From what I've understood is, you know, just because of the construction cost of the new landfill, I don't think they're planning on reducing any fees. But I think the hope is, is like Matt said, over time, the increases that they have to keep putting on to truck it clear out to the other one will be less. So over time, it'll be less than what it would have been. But I don't think they're planning on any decreases in fees.
But we as a city don't have any involvement?
No.
That's all county? A multi-county?
Yeah, it's several counties. The only involvement we've had is I've tried to get the commissioners hooked up with a guy down at the site or down at INL that is looking at turning a lot of trash into an insulation product and reselling it and hoping that that might be something that might work out here, which if that were the case, and they could turn a lot of it into a product and sell it, then maybe it would save us all some money. But other than that, we really haven't had anything to do with it.
Other than we're their biggest customer by a long shot.
Yeah, yeah.
Right? And so, okay.
Wait, we have a question here.
Well, we went over, like, you showed us how much, like, on an average customer, didn't you, when we talked about this in the work meeting?
Yeah, so if we could, I'll show you, it's right here. So I'll just give it, the resident one is probably the most common one that people ask about. So as you look at that, we basically went in, for several years, we went out and we said, well, how much sewer and how much water residents using? And so I take an average. And so this is an average bill. So it's not going to represent everybody's bill because everybody uses different amounts, right? But the average charge will basically go, you can see it, an increase in sewer of 35 cents or 0.6%. Water would go up about $1.39 or $1.39 and 3.4%. Garbage would go up $1.69 or 6.7%. So grand total, about $3.43 a month or 2.8%. And then you can, if you go down, Deborah, you can see, like, here's a typical commercial one on the bottom, they're more like 1.5%. And so that's, kind of goes back to that discussion I had about garbage and the volume rates going down a little. And so they're not seeing as big of an increase because they're actually seeing a reduction in their garbage. So, does that make sense?
And the recycling is in with the garbage?
Yes.
Yeah.
Just a couple of questions. How do we compare with other cities on our costs of our water and sewer?
Oh, water and sewer? You know, it's kind of across the board. A lot of cities differ. I haven't, I mean, I haven't looked at it recently, but there's plenty of studies that we can go look at. I think, is it Schiss? I think Schiss engineers do one every year where you can go compare it to all the other cities. What were you saying?
There's a lot of cities that don't meter. Try to meter, but they can't get into it now that they're established.
Yeah.
From what I've seen, that it varies. Some cities were lower and some cities were low. Typically, we're not a lot higher. We're a little higher than some of them, but a lot of them were lower. So I think we're, I think we're doing pretty good.
Yeah, I mean, and this, of course, is just your maintenance side of it, right? And then there's the capacity side, capacity side of fees, which we're not recommending changes on tonight, so.
And one final question on the recycle. Are we still subsidizing that quite heavily?
Well, it's about, I don't know if I would, oh, you mean the program? Oh, yeah. Yeah. Yes.
I think sometime we need to address that.
Well, you know, and that's a funny thing because I was just having a conversation with one of my neighbors the other day. And this was a neighbor who I would have thought, would have said, if it's costing us extra money, get rid of it. And he was actually just the opposite. He said, my wife has turned into the recycling Nazi. And he goes, if you need to charge us a little extra to do recycling, I think it's a good thing. And I've been surprised to hear that from actually several.
My wife would probably say the same thing. I'm probably the opposite.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, and to address that, Colin, when we met a couple, probably three years ago now, as a committee, we actually discussed that very thing. But we felt like we really shouldn't have that discussion again until the residents actually understand how much they're paying for that. And that's why we've been shifting that cost over three years, right? And so next year, as we go in and we say, okay, now you're going to pay 100% of the direct, you know, hired work cost that you're getting, or the direct cost for that recycling, I should say, then I think it would be a better time to look at that. Because the problem we had before was, you know, everybody would be like, oh, well, if we get recycling, how much am I going to save? And it might be a dollar or $2, right? But in the future, you might be able to look at it and say, well, actually, you'd probably save $6. And so it makes it a little easier for them to give us an honest opinion about whether it's worth it or not, if that makes sense. And so that's kind of the reason why we put a pause on that for a few years.
I just know a lot of residents don't use it every week. I mean, the blue cone or the blue cans aren't out every week. I'm one of them. It's like every other week.
Me too, yeah.
They're all every, they're all.
They're charging every week.
Yeah, that's right.
It's every two weeks, but mine's about once a month. Now my kids are gone. Doesn't take that much, but we're still charging them.
Well, and honestly, you know, you're working with a contractor and it's not always as smooth as you like. I mean, they miss cans quite often and sometimes there's not a whole lot we can do. It's like, well, sorry, we'll pick it up in a couple of weeks, you know?
Yeah.
That's one question. I know we asked this before and I don't remember the answer, but did we ever find out, like, did they really recycle most of it? Is most of it recyclable? Okay, that's what I thought.
Oh, no, they have to go through it and I don't have the percentage right off the top of my head, but they still end up throwing away a fairly large share of.
And I think sometimes what happens is they go, they run it through their system and they throw out the stuff that they can't recycle. And then I think they probably have a truck that takes that to the garbage dump. And somebody sees that truck out there and they're like, well, they're just dumping it all, you know? And so I think that's where that comment comes. Because I've heard people say that, well, I saw them out there just dumping it in the dump. And I'm going, well, yeah, that's because you put the wrong stuff in the recycling bin.
Right. But that would be something we're looking at too, right? Because if it's not even getting recycled.
I think the percentage, unfortunately, they said Rexburg was one of their higher customers as far as putting stuff in the bins that aren't supposed to be. But we've been putting out messages and stuff, trying to get that out to people better. And I think maybe we're doing better now. I haven't talked to them recently to find out what the percentage of, what do they call it, contaminated stuff or whatever that they have to take out. But I think the last time we talked to them, they said we were doing better than what we were before.
Would that potentially lower our cost of recycling if we were better at?
I don't know. I doubt it would because they still have to run their same routes with their trucks and that run.
They don't have to haul it out to the dump and pay that fee.
Yeah, maybe. I mean, there's possible that it could do a little, but I'm guessing it wouldn't. Yeah.
That might be a selling point if we could figure that out to the citizens and say, if you'd like to pay less for your recycling.
Do a better job, yeah. Okay.
Okay, so just real quick, these are the fees that are changing for utilities. So really, we're just looking for a motion to set public hearing for August 7th. And then I would advertise this starting next Tuesday and then hold that public hearing. And then the rates would not change, as I mentioned before, until they get their bill actually clear in November for October, so.
Okay, at this point in time, then I would entertain a motion to set the public hearing for utility rate increases for 2025. Is there such a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion that we set public hearing for August 7th for the proposed utility rate increases for fiscal year 2025.
All right, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Johnson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes. Let's move on to item number five.
Okay, lots of fee changes here. So, and just so you guys are aware, the reason why there's a lot is if we have a pretty substantial fee change going on in any one department, we kind of put it out there and say, everybody review your fees. And so this is what we kind of got back over the last few weeks. And so some of these, the airport one's pretty straightforward. It's just a minimal increase there. It's 10% is what it is. And so we haven't changed that one. You can see the dates. 2022 is kind of when we changed it last. And really, they won't pay that until we bill it in December, I think is when we bill it. And then the next one, and just jump in if you have questions. The next one's cultural arts. So what we're trying to address here is, as they start to open up these guided tours, we're trying to establish some pricing for that. So what we're saying is for an adult, $10, for a youth, $8. But we're also saying that there's got to be a minimum charge of $50 because you have to have several people involved in that. And so those are the themes that they could potentially do as those are developed out, the flood of 1976, the historic Rexburg, and then Romance Theater. And then on the bottom there, what we have is kind of a large group fee, just gives you a little bit of a discount. We're saying that that would be $75 for the hour, and you could have up to 10 guests and then additional guests would be $7. The thing, the thing, the thing that we do want to make you aware of on that is, that's the price, that's the max we can charge. And so if they wanted to, for example, offer a special Wednesday night one where you could have 20 to 30 people come in, they could do that and say, hey, we're only going to charge 40 bucks to cover our labor or whatever. And so just keep that in mind. Any questions on that? Okay. Customer service, so we addressed the business registration. Some of you were in the budget meeting where we kind of talked about this. There's several changes here, but really the one that is, affects most people is that minimum all business. It would, so basically, we're saying go from $30 to $40 for a business registration. We haven't updated it since 2019. And then you can see all the other smaller ones there. So fire, just have one, it's a standby for ambulance and fire. You can see about a $50 increase on each one. And then the next one, which is a huge section, is golf. So we met with the golf board last Tuesday and went through these. Typically, we do this in the fall, but we thought, you know what, we're doing this, let's just get ahead of it. So these changes wouldn't take effect until the next season, even though we might pass them in August. So I would just say that the big thing here is that you're probably anywhere between 4% and 5% increase on average, with a little bit higher being on the daily play versus the season pass. And so anyways, those, you can see them. We did increase the weekend Teton Lakes, probably the most on the daily play. And as you keep going down, Deb, oh, let me explain, I had some people ask about the club rentals. So all we're saying on the club rentals is that it can go up to $50. We're not going to charge that for every club rental, but he does have a premium set that he would charge that on. So as you keep going down, one thing that Noah and I added that we're going to run across the board in our next meeting is whether we should just go buy our own tables and chairs and then rent those. The thing that I'd say is critical there is, is we just need to make sure that if we're going to invest in them, that we actually charge people for them and not just say, hey, that's free. And so, and I think we could buy everything we need for probably less than five grand, to be honest. So, so that's what that one is. And then here's the passes. Buddy Pass, if that's of interest to you, we would go to $229. It's currently all in $200. So pretty substantial increase on that one, if you're looking at the percents.
Question, is Jefferson Hills' season pass holder daily rate?
Yeah.
Is doing away with that?
Yeah, they really haven't been doing it per cam, and so there's no reason to have it on the list, so. Any other questions on golf? Yeah, I don't think the rest are really that substantial. There is a little bit on cart. We went up like a quarter or something, but that's up above, I think. Okay, I'm going to jump into Legacy Flight Museum. So you can see this one, fairly minimal increases on most of them. The group rental's probably a little bit higher of an increase, but you know, that has just got a lot more costly to do that. There's a lot more airplanes to move around to make space and so, those kind of things. Museum of Rexburg, you can see we're recommending some price changes there. You know, this one is really, you know, may not apply for a little while, but we're just updating them to stay current. And so you can see what those are, they're fairly minimal. And, uh, so you can see what those are. They're they're fairly minimal. Police, um, the big thing with police is, uh, that one's not big. Let's keep going. Okay, right there. So so the hourly rate, so right now we charge $50. If someone comes in and does a public gathering permit, we're saying take that to 64. And so, and that's based on, you know, real cost analysis. And then the contracted labor rate, which is mostly with the school district, we're saying needs to probably go to 77. And that that's the reason why that one's so much higher is it's it's paid out at time and a half, basically, to all those officers that do it. And so, and then, um, a little bit of a change on the hook and drop for snow removal, go from 125 to 150. And just so you know, this is rarely used, um, but if it is used, it it definitely costs more than 125 bucks. And so, cause what happens is generally they'll come pull, you know, several vehicles. And so you can get the price down per vehicle with a tow truck company. But the problem is, is if we don't collect that for some reason from the person that we hooked and dropped, we're on the hook to pay it. And so, but like I say, we're we're trying not to do that one if we can help it. So this is probably the biggest change in police right here is parking permits. And so this one, we've been meeting, uh, with the mayor and staff and and others for probably two months now, I'm guessing. And so, um, what we're saying is, as you, as you look at our parking lots, right now, you know, you you could look at the spreadsheets if you want, but we basically track every permit that we give out, right? And there's so many free ones and there's so many that we charge people for. And so the the naming that we kind of came up with on that was that for those that have, um, are a downtown resident, so for example, if we took this back alley, there's several residents above the Woodman Ballroom. Because they paid into an LID, as many of the people did in these common parking lot areas, we're going to give them basically a reduced rate of $20 and and call that an allocated stall. And then you can see a business allocated stall would be $50. And then after those allocated stalls are are gone out of the inventory, they would basically have the option to purchase more. And we're saying take that cost from $100 to $200. And, um, that would be called, that's a discretionary pass, right? And they don't have to buy those. Uh, it's it's really up to them. And we didn't just go out and say, eh, I think $200 sounds good. We actually went out, we looked at how much does it cost to enforce this? How much does it cost to create these permits? How much does it cost to maintain the lots? And we really didn't even include the actual, um, cost of the lot itself or the land itself, which is probably the most expensive part, to be honest. And so, so that, it is a fairly big increase, um, but that's the direction that we're recommending.
Matt, can I add just a little context to that too? We actually, not only did we study the costs on that, but we also talked with some of the business people over here and, uh, we actually threw out $300 and most of them were like, well, yeah, that's less than a dollar a day. So we felt like, you know, the 200, even though it's a doubling, it seems like a a big increase. But for what we're doing there, I think, I think it's pretty reasonable, you know, to have a parking space for for a whole year. Uh, it's pretty reasonable. If you go on a lot of other places, a lot of other cities, it's way, way, way more than that for parking for a year.
Yeah, and 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 we we know that it's only going to get worse to enforce parking.
Yeah.
As we continue to grow and and as we take, you know, go into construction mode on some of these, these parking lots. So, okay, the next thing is, um, there there's a couple of smaller ones, but the downtown commercial and residential, you can see that would go from 40 to 80. There's one fee that we don't even use, so I'm just saying delete that fee. Let's simplify things. Owner residential, this is, so you do have some people that own homes like up by the university. They do get two of the, they get two permits for free for the residents those last three years. But we're saying if they want to come buy more, it's going to be $200. And, um, so those are the the campus vicinity and then the owner residential for those that.
Is that, is that what they get now?
That that's my understanding is they get two that last three years. And then, and and we just do that for convenience so they don't have to come back. The other thing that, oh, I should have mentioned this, we're going to, when we do these parking permits going forward, uh, we, right now, they're like, you come in, you get 12 months. We're not going to do that anymore. We're going to say these are good from October 1st through September. And so if they came in, you know, halfway through the year, we would prorate that cost. So instead of 200, it'd be 100 bucks if they came in halfway. And then the last one section is really the university parking. And so these are for around campus, um, for students and whatnot. So they they can either come in and they can pay 200 bucks and have it for the whole year, or they can come in per semester and pay $80 per semester. And just so you guys are aware, this is very much in line with what BYU Idaho is changing their parking. They may have changed it already. I'm not sure if they have yet, but we got with them. They gave us their pricing and so it it's very close to that. Any questions on the parking? That's a lot.
Yeah, go ahead.
So is BYU Idaho, so but theirs is not doubling because they kept the fees up. It's huge too.
Yeah, I don't know if it's doubling, but.
No, in fact, we're we're kind of trying to stay right kind of in par with them.
Okay.
I think they're going to 180 for an annual pass now. We we wanted to be just slightly higher than them.
Uh huh.
Prefer that people buy parking lot parking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. All right, um, the next one are just two fees that we'll see down below under recreation. We don't need them in both places. Uh, Rexburg Rapids, so so John and Taggart got together. They are recommending on exclusive two-hour rental that they increase that from 1450 to 1650. Swim lessons, they're recommending a $5 increase. And then, uh, the party room is probably the biggest change is they're recommending that that be $50 per hour instead of really $25 per hour, because they used to make people pay 50 and rent it for two hours. They're just saying $50 an hour. The next one is class country skiing and a few programs in recreation. So you can see they're recommending that, uh, on ski rentals, they go from $7 to $10. For an adult, the kids would be increase of 5 to 8. And and they can still offer, you know, group discounts, so keep that in mind, like if if a group came in and wanted to come in the evening. And then, uh, the other thing is, is they want to offer a a higher price for a demo ski. So what we're looking to do is actually become a retailer of of the skis that they purchase. And the reason why we want to do that is we can buy the skis for a whole lot less if we do that for our fleet. And then if somebody came in and said, hey, I really want to buy a better, more quality ski, then we could, we can bring that in as as and have them demo it, pay the 18 bucks to demo it. And then if they're like, yeah, I want to buy this, then we we can sell it to them. So.
So what percentage would we get of those sales and things like that?
So they have, uh, they require, and so so if you were a seller, they have a kind of a wholesale price that you pay. And then the they require you to have like a minimum market that that you can go down to. And I I don't know exactly what percentage that is, to be honest. Um, you, Parker Anderson would know all that. But basically, they say this is full retail, here's kind of our minimum market, and they want you to stay at the minimum, basically, if you want to be one of their vendors.
At least 30% or more, maybe.
Yeah, it's not that they want you to sell it for the minimum. They want you to.
They want.
Below the minimum.
Below the minimum, yeah. I mean, they want you to sell it at retail.
Retail if the person who bought it for that, right? So we kind of set our own mark.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. And then, oh, sorry, girls and boys basketball, about a $10 increase there. And then we did, we did some increases to the camps. We're not, we're not doing the camps right now, but if we do, 1050 wasn't going to cover that camp cost. And so, and you can see we hadn't updated that since 2011. So, and then, uh, golf, uh, like, uh, golf youth, we're saying go from 55 to 65 dollars. Women's volleyball team, 450 to 500. And then this, this is kind of a big jump, but non-resident, we're saying that go from $5 to $10. So, and that hasn't changed since 2011, so. Uh, field prep, they're they're asking to go from $20 to 25 and $30 to 35, depending on the soccer field size. T-ball has about a $10 increase. And then pickleball, John's asking to go up to 80. And the reason why is he's, he wants to have a not-to-exceed price because he wants to do some bigger tournaments that have potentially some some more prizes. And so, so it just gives him the ability to to go up if he needs to. And so we're not saying they'll all be $80. We're saying that they may be if we're going to bring in a a pretty good grand prize for that, so.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
So he's saying they're not all going to be 80, because I, maybe I'm crazy, but 80 sounds like an awful lot to me for
Yeah.
one entry to a pickleball tournament.
Yeah, it it would be, but but I think it really depends on what you're getting out of it, right? And so if someone feels justified, they might do it, but that's going to be all in their their marketing, right? Uh, how they want to do that and approach that. I'm not sure that they could be successful doing that.
Regular tournament might only be 40, $45, but if they're going to do a bigger tournament that's got big prizes and things like that, then that gives him the ability to go up to that price as a as a max.
And they'd make sure that they had enough participants before they.
Yeah, so they they, because they can, right, they can cancel it or maybe they say, we're going to scale back, you know?
John has changed the model that he's using for his tournaments and is getting a lot better response.
Yeah, I've seen some of that.
Okay, so last couple for recreation are really field prep for baseball. You can see that going from 35 to 45 and 25 to 35 if it's not under the lights, essentially. And then the races, there's three different races there that they're asking for some increases. Main Street Mile is a pretty big bump. Um, you know, the $5 has been the price forever since we started it, but you really do get quite a bit for that $9. You get to go into Rexburg Rapids that day. You get a water bottle. They're now giving like the first 100.
And the entry fee is eight and a half. Did, go ahead.
Well, I I was in that meeting and I thought we decided to not bump it that much for the Main Street Mile.
Well, they they actually originally came back at 10 and and then I.
But but in the meeting, we didn't, we did, we said that we were thinking that would be like a family-friendly event. I thought we said like seven.
Which which meeting are we talking?
Budget meeting.
Of the budget?
You were in there, remember? We said we didn't want it to go up to nine because we thought that was like a family-friendly event that, you know, if you have several children.
So, and and that, and if that's what you guys want to do, you have every right to change that. We can advertise it at nine and take input.
Nine-dollar individual or or if they have three or more, you could, we could do a family rate or something like that.
Do you have what we talked about in the meeting? Do you have the, do you remember what we said? Because I remember we talked about this for quite a while and then we came to a conclusion that we were going to charge more the day of if they hadn't pre-registered, but we were going to keep it at like, I thought it was like no more than seven.
If if they.
Had pre-registered.
Pre-register.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that and that can be, you you know, I can go back and look at my notes. I I'd be lying if I told you I remember that whole conversation.
We talked about how it's just one mile, so it's not like there's aid stations or anything like that. I know we're giving them a Rexburg Rapids and everything, but I don't know, I felt like we had a really good discussion and I thought we came to the conclusion that we wanted that to stay kind of like a family-friendly event that people could afford, even if they have like five or six kids.
And and we can, like I say, if you, if that's what you guys want to do, then by all means, we we can do that.
I'd like to see it stay lower. Yeah, I think that's too high for families.
Yeah, especially if, I mean, uh, if they've got, you know, three or four or five kids and they all want, the whole family wants to run it, it can be a fair amount, but, um, but I don't know, did they, did we talk about doing a, like, just a family rate and having the higher individual rate?
They, I.
Trying to remember.
They they may have that, I don't know. Um, but I mean, this doesn't, going up to the nine doesn't mean that they can't do a lower, you know, pre-registration.
I just think nine is too high for that. It's one mile. And we used to run it all the time and there were a lot of families and I think we should have some things that families could afford, even if they don't have a lot of money to throw around.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I, yeah, I do remember having that discussion too and I I.
That's too high.
I'm sorry, I don't really remember the conclusion that it came to.
Do you guys want, what what number, I mean, I can lower it when I advertise it tomorrow, so it's up to you guys, really.
I think seven's good.
Do you want to do that? Any, any thoughts down here?
Will there be an additional charge for those that didn't sign up early?
I didn't do that. Nine, maybe nine dollars.
You want to do?
Day of and seven dollars.
And maybe that's what we decided on.
Yeah, that's not a fine to me. I don't care.
That's what I would do.
Then you can do it early if you didn't have the money.
So seven, seven dollars if they pre-register.
Okay, so seven, pre-register.
Nine dollars day of.
Just from a pragmatic perspective, make that a decision that you make as a policy. Your fee rate, this schedule is intended to set your limits. And so you're kind of have, you're getting a little farther down into the weeds than you maybe need to. I don't disagree with you. I'm simply saying the $9 number, if you want to make it so that you can't charge up to $9, change that number.
Yeah.
If you just want to make a family rate that says families up to five for $25 or pre-registration for seven, that's a conversation for when you're sitting down planning the raise, not a fee that you want to adopt going for the for the annuals here.
But we never see this when they're doing what you're talking about.
Well, somebody should. If you if you want to send the message to John that you want this to be affordable, then somebody who's on that committee should be telling John that.
But we did, we did in our meeting and it wasn't listened to, so.
Well, yeah, I wouldn't say it wasn't listened to.
Seven dollars for pre-registration and this, that's not what you do normally put on your fee schedule.
Hey, what I will do, I'll 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 make a note here and, uh, Main Street Mile, and, uh, you know, we'll talk that over with John, say that we, say that I'll just tell him the council wants the, uh, what he just said, you know, as as a policy, we'll set it at seven.
Yeah, and I'll, and I, and I'll add all that in the notes.
Okay.
So, so I'll add that. Um, I mean, I'll leave it at nine.
Like, you know, we're charging.
Because that's what you're going to potentially pay, right, if you come the day of? So, okay, all right.
We're we're in charge of less, we just can't go over that, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, sanitation, uh, they have a extra trip charge. So this is like if somebody forgot to put their can out or or wanted more than once or wanted us to come pick up in extra time, we're saying go to 30 bucks. Man hour.
One per year free, right?
The what?
Get one per year free?
Yeah.
Basically.
So the rest, the rest of these, um, on sanitation, the labor'd go to 50. We try not to encourage that.
Per year.
You said do the whole neighborhood, just bring them to my house and they'll have them come pick them up.
Okay, sanitation truck, this is rarely if ever used, but that's like if somebody was like, okay, we really need your sanitation truck and we want to rent it for an hour, 300 bucks, because those are over $300,000 now, so.
The sanitation.
That includes the driver, right?
No, it's just equipment. That's just for the truck. So, like I say, it's rarely if ever used. Okay, so the next section is is pretty big. This one's the street section, so Justin and Keith got together and based on LID 53, a lot of these changed. So, and some of them were pretty dramatic. Uh, and so it just kind of shows you the dramatic increase that we're starting to see, right? Each year from year to year on these curb and gutter and sidewalk and other things, right? And so, so and what this is, right? Keep in mind, this is what we would collect back, uh, from someone that goes and develops after we already put those improvements in, right? So clawback fee. Any questions on that? Okay, let's keep going. We're almost there, I promise. So work order changes, so these, this was just, we went through and updated based on, um, you know, what it really costs now. And so like the big one there obviously is a sweeper. Somebody wants to borrow one of our sweepers, 400 bucks an hour, because those are also almost $400,000 to purchase and. are also almost four hundred thousand dollars to purchase and.
Road sweeper?
Yeah.
Is that the vacuum one?
The one that vacuums, correct.
I was just thinking about that the other day, but.
Yeah. And and if it's needed, just give us a call. Okay. All right, so I'm not going to go through all the rest. And then water, so this one is, there's a new one. So disconnect is kind of a big one, I guess, reconnect after disconnect. That's been thirty-five dollars since 2015. We're saying go to forty dollars. And then unauthorized water valve adjustments or tampering per occurrence, we're saying six hundred dollars. So this would be if somebody gets into our box and just all of a sudden starts turning our water off, and then we start getting a bunch of calls, hey, why, why is my water not working? And we start sending people out to try to figure it out and find out that contractor decided, I'm just going to shut that off and do this job real quick.
At least, is that enough?
It's more designed.
Enough, that seems like a lot.
Water gets shut off, who happens to have his own master key and goes and turns it back on by himself.
That as well.
It's penalty for bypassing our system.
Yeah, six hundred dollars.
Process.
Yeah, I think it's enough. That seems like a lot to me.
It's too good. It's also contractors that might go open our valves to flush other lines without us knowing. And then we have a problem where we also, we have a hit on our sampling, so we got to go back through and do a bunch of re-sampling. So there's a bunch of different scenarios that this will cover.
Okay, wastewater clawback fees is the last one, I think, but you can see the increase on those as well, based on, and this is all based on recent bids that we've got from contractors.
Just, sorry, go back to that one for a second, though. Is that, is that like, like on my water, like on my water meter at my house, if I want to shut it off, that, that, you know, we're not talking about that, right? If I want to shut it off to.
We have times when they get a shut off because they haven't, they're not current on their bill. We'll send our guy up for that disconnect. There are some people who have access to the tool that they need to reach all the way down to the bottom of the pit, not just the valve.
Oh, clear down the bottom.
They'll reach all the way down and turn their water back on, and then Christie will have to go back out or send one of our people back out. And we either turn them over to law enforcement for theft, or we hit them with a fee. Most of them will elect to take the fee rather than be prosecuted for theft and services. And that's up to, right? So understand up to six hundred.
Kind of the same thing as the others.
In there, depending on what the case was.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to make sure six hundred dollars is a lot for, for certain things.
Okay, that's it. Any questions? So this is basically same thing as the last one. We're trying to set a public hearing for the seventh of August, and then we would advertise these.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to set a public hearing for these proposed fee changes.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and that's, of course, to set the public hearing also for August seventh. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes. Okay, thank you. That was quite a bit of work there.
Nice job, Matt.
A lot of work, in fact. Okay, item number C is Public Works. We don't have anything on the agenda for that unless there's any questions for Keith or anything about Public Works items. Does anybody have any questions or comments, praises?
One comment?
Yes.
I saw the crosswalks got painted, so thank you very much. I was very excited about that, so.
All right. In fact, yeah, I saw the, the painting truck out today doing some different paintings, so looks like some of that stuff is getting done, so that's good. All right, item number, we'd have, we have no items under number nine or ten. We have no second or third reading, so item number eleven is the consent calendar, which is the minutes from the July third, twenty-twenty-four meeting and the approval of the payment of our City of Rexburg bills. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent calendar.
All right, thank you. Is there any, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by council? No.
Already did.
We already did, actually. But if you have any questions on number eight.
I missed, I was, I missed the first one.
Okay. Yeah, we did that early on because we had the people here to be ratified, so we did that earlier. Okay, the consent calendar, let's see, where was it? We had a motion and a second. Is there any questions or comments about anything on the consent calendar? Hearing none, all in favor?